We have a quorum, and it is also the appointed time for the meeting. Let me call the meeting to order. Shall we invite the officials and deputations to come in, please?
At this meeting, we have from the administration, Secretary for Transport and Housing, Professor Anthony Cheung, Mr. Andy Chan, Deputy Secretary for Transport and Housing, Mrs. Ingrid Yuen, Commissioner for Transport, Miss Cindy Law, Assistant Commissioner, Transport Department, and also a number of other officials. And from the Occupational Safety and Health Council, we have Mr. Tang Hua Shing, the Executive Director, Mr. David Leng, Deputy Commissioner for Labour. We have also invited representatives of New World First Bus and Kowloon Motor Bus. From New World First Bus, we have Mr. Samuel Chang, the Managing Director, and then Mr. William Chung, Head of Operations, Mr. Vincent Fong, Senior Engineering Support Manager. From the KMB, we have Mr. Carrick Fock, Operations Director, Miss Vivian Chan, Corporate Affairs Director, and also Mr. Ho Chi Man, Head of Depots. I welcome to you all. Let us also invite the union representatives to come in. We have representatives from ten unions attending the meeting today. After the traffic accident, the community showed a lot of concern with regard to the health of commercial drivers and also the driving behaviour. Bus company workers' unions called us up. They have requested to attend this meeting. In fact, workers and unions and also drivers of other modes of transport have also asked to attend the meeting today. But considering the number of unions involved, and also since today, the meeting is really to discuss the issues concerning bus drivers, we have therefore not invited unions of workers working in other modes of transport to this meeting. First of all, can I ask Professor Anthony Cheung to walk us through the administration's paper? Thank you, Chairman. Last Monday, a traffic accident happened on Chaiwan Road. It involved two franchised buses and one taxi. It is a very serious traffic accident, and I feel very sad about it. I'd like again to send my regards to the families of the deceased and also the injured victims. We understand that on the day of the accident, the SWD already contacted the families of the deceased and also hospitalized victims to see how assistance could be afforded to them. After the accident, the Transport Department immediately required the New World First Bus to submit a report, and also last Friday, the Transport Department had a meeting with franchised bus companies and reiterated the importance of safety for franchised buses. I will first make three points, and then I'll defer to the Commissioner for Transport and also the Deputy Director of Labour to walk you through other parts of the paper. Number one, about requirements of physical health of bus captains and requirements on working hours. According to the Road Traffic Driving Licenses Regulations, which applies to all drivers, not just commercial drivers, there are certain requirements. If you are suffering from any disease or physical disability, you will not be given a driving licence. And also, the driver licence holder, if he should find that he is suffering from any disease or physical disability, he should report to the Commissioner, and the licence can be revoked. With regard to franchised buses, all operators, starting from 2007, have been required to provide physical examination for bus captains at the age of fifty or above. And the examinations would include chest examination, eyesight, hearing, diabetes, blood pressure, blood and urine tests. If bus captains reach the age of sixty, they would be subject to an electrocardiogram. In terms of working hours, in Hong Kong, we do not have standard working hours. However, with regard to franchised buses, they have to act according to the guidelines on bus captains' working hours, rest times, and meal breaks in formulating the shift for working drivers. And also with regard to the shifts, the rest time between shifts, etc., there are all these guidelines. And according to the Transport Department monitoring, the compliance situation of the guidelines is satisfactory. As to the road safety measures of the road section concerned, the section of Chaiwan Road between Tai Tam Road and Sha Kew Wan Road is designed according to the Transport Planning and Design Manual. That section of the road is not a black spot for traffic accidents. However, the Transport Department has also made a number of improvement measures in recent years, including the erection of warning signs, providing anti-skid surfacing, and also erecting crash barriers, etc. And also, all franchised buses going downhill on Chaiwan Road, regardless of whether there are boarding alighting passengers before continuing with their trips downhill, they must stop at the bus stop near the junction with Arkong Ahm Road to avoid them travelling too fast. Number three, the follow-up work of the accident. The Transport Department has worked together with franchised buses to review the arrangements of health checks for bus captains. And the medical sector will be consulted in order to increase road safety of franchised buses. The TD has already had that meeting with franchised bus companies, and in the short term, it will also hold meetings with the major bus captain unions. And also, the police is carrying out investigation from three angles, namely mechanical failure, human negligence, and breach of traffic regulations. The TD and franchised bus companies would certainly cooperate with the police. After the police has completed investigation, if it is found that the existing rules and laws and also the policies should be improved upon, we will certainly do follow-up. Next, I'd like to defer to the Commissioner for Transport to introduce the paper from the Bureau and also the Department, and also the DD of Labour to introduce the paper on occupational safety and health of professional drivers. And then we will be very happy to take members' questions. As the Chairman said, there are representatives from New World First Bus and also KMB. Thank you. Thank you very much, Bureau Chief. Miss Ingrid Yuen, over to you. Thank you, Chairman. Chairman, the paper has given an account of the accident and also the follow-up work as well as investigation. I think members must have read the news from news media in recent days as well, so I would not repeat that part of the paper. As for the working hours and health check for bus captains, the Bureau Chief has already given you the rough details, but now I would like to give you more information. Under the Road Traffic Driving Licenses Regulations, an applicant for a driving licence, whether it is new application or reissue or renewal, if he is suffering from any disease or physical disability specified in the first schedule of the regulation, say for example epilepsy, hypertension, or that he is suffering from sudden attacks of disabling, giddiness, or fainting due to hypertension or any other cause, he must declare it. And once that is declared, the Commissioner will reject his application. In fact, he shall reject the application. It is also stipulated that upon application or reissue or renewal, the holder does not have any such disease or physical disability, but this is discovered later, then he should inform the Commissioner in writing. After the Commissioner has inquired into the case, if he is of the view that this person should not be driving, then the licence issued can be revoked. As the Bureau Chief said, this applies to all drivers, including bus captains of franchised buses. The regulation also stipulates that if a person is aged seventy years or above on new application or renewal, this person should provide a medical examination certificate issued by a registered medical practitioner, who is acceptable to the Commissioner not earlier than four months before the application, to prove that the applicant is medically fit to drive. And in terms of franchised buses, the health check and also working hours of their staff, the Bureau Chief has given you the overall situation. I'd just like to add that bus captains reaching the age of fifty would have to undergo health checks, and also those who are at sixty or more would be subject to an ECG. And also, the law also requires bus captains to declare any disease or physical disability specified in the first schedule of the regulations. Also, franchised bus companies have issued guidelines to remind bus captains not to continue driving if feeling unwell while on duty. The working manuals issued by franchised bus companies also remind bus captains to ensure physical and mental fitness and to seek medical consultation promptly in case of sickness.
After the accident, as the secretary has said, the Transport Department have liaised with the franchised bus company to review the working hours. So in relation to working hours and meal times, we have regular contacts. And actually, in 2010, the TD revised the guidelines to further improve the working hours and rest time arrangements. Under the current guidelines, bus captains shall have a break of not less than ten hours between successive working days, and maximum duty should not exceed fourteen hours, and driving duty should not exceed eleven hours in a day. And after working for six hours, there should be a break of at least thirty minutes. And within the six-hour duty time, there should be at least twenty minutes of surface break. And there should be a meal break of one hour for duty of not less than eight hours in a day. The franchised bus companies are required to submit a report every three months to the Transport Department with regard to the implementation of the guidelines. And the Transport Department will also engage an independent party to conduct surveys on the working hours of bus captains for verification purpose. And in relation to enhancing the awareness of drivers of commercial vehicles in closely monitoring their physical health, the Transport Department has been launching promotional and educational activities in the past three years to remind drivers to drive safely and to take care of their own health. There are also free health checks arranged for some drivers of commercial vehicles. In the past three years, on average, everyone, every year, we offer such services to two thousand drivers. As regards the road design and the relevant road measures implemented, the secretary has already touched on that, and I won't repeat those. After all those measures have been implemented, we have been reminding drivers to be very careful, has to be very careful with that stretch of the road. We believe the design is safe and is in line with the road design standards of the Transport Department. That's all by way of my introduction. Deputy Commissioner for Labour, thank you. I would briefly mention how the current laws protect professional drivers and also the latest measures implemented by the Labour Department to protect drivers' health. Chairman, when a professional driver is in a vehicle, the safety matters are regulated by the road traffic legislation. Otherwise, in relation to the non-driving duties, they will be subject to occupational safety and health legislation, and the Labour Department attaches importance to occupational safety matters. In the middle, we have come up with this guideline, this booklet on occupational safety and health for professional drivers. We are going to contact the Dieticians Association and Hong Kong Physical Fitness Association to launch a publicity campaign to inform them of the impact of lifestyle and diet, so as to prevent common risks such as hypertension and diabetes. We are going to collaborate with major unions to promote this. So we will also be inviting the bus companies to see if they would like to join us. Thank you. We have ten unions here today. Let me remind you that your attendance in this meeting is not covered by the Legislative Council Powers and Privileges Ordinance. So when you speak, when you offer your comments, of course, you can follow those you sell out in your written submission. And you should do this within the specified time. Every union representative will be given three minutes, because we know that the agenda item is a matter of concern, and we have quite a turn off today. Let me now invite Mr. Chan Shing-Ming from Motor Transport Workers General Union, New World Bus Branch, to speak. I'm Chan Shing-Ming from Motor Transport Workers General Union, New World Bus Branch. With regard to the accident, I would like to send my regards to the families and the bereaved. Maybe through this incident, you get to understand the life of a bus captain. This particular bus captain started to drive buses since 1984. He cared about his health a lot. He didn't smoke or drink. And from time to time, you would see him jogging near his home. On that day, he was on leave, but he was on duty, although it was his leave day. The work period for that day was only eight hours, thirty minutes plus. And when this happened, he was just having, he had just had a tea break. So he was on the last run of duty before he would leave. So the work hours up to that point was only seven hours. So it had nothing to do with long working hours. According to news reports, he had a physical checkup in July, and it was found that he was in good health. But of course, we don't know whether he concealed any disability or disease. For example, according to the Commissioner, there are seven conditions covered by the legislation. But whether he concealed anything, we don't know. But of course, he didn't want that to happen. Well, my company provided a video recording to the police, and according to the witnesses, he just went unconscious. And I think we need to discuss whether the physical examination offered by the bus companies is adequate and also whether there are other areas where improvements can be made. Next, we have Ms. Ju Shih-Hung from KMB Workers General Union. Good morning. My name is Ju Shih-Hung. Having heard the previous speakers, let me say that our company is offering the acceptable physical examination service. So fifty, if you're fifty, you have to undergo a physical examination. If you reach sixty, there will be an ECG check. Bus captains understand that we have to take care of passengers. And we should also do some exercise and pay attention to our diet. For those with unknown or cryptic illnesses, then there may be untoward happenings without a warning. Next, we have Ms. Chen Wei-Kuan from Motor Transport Workers General Union, KMB Branch. My name is Chen Wei-Kuan. From what I've seen regarding the accident, I think it was an unforeseen incident. The bus captain wouldn't have wanted this to happen. But the captain faced a lot of pressure from the media, from the possibility of criminal liability, from public opinion. If we think all the fault is due to the physical examination, then I think bus captains will face even greater pressure. I think there's more than health involved. The bus captains face a lot of pressure, criminal liability, complaints from passengers, mental stress, pressure brought by road conditions. Well, we do not object to the tightening up of physical examination, but I hope the department and the authorities would also explore other areas of improvement. If we add ECG, are we going to have even more? Do we want to conduct a stressed ECG test? Do we have to go as far as physical examinations for airplane pilots? If we go down this route, then we all have to shoulder the burden arising from more checks and examinations. We should also look at other things such as road conditions. Next, Motor Transport Workers General Union, Long Wind Bus Branch, Ms. Jung Chi-K. My name is Jung Chi-K. I think the physical examination system has worked well. On the 26th of August, an E-31 bus of Long Wind suffered from this incident. The bus captain lost consciousness and pumped into Chaiwan, a more, a Ching Wai more. After further examination, there was no problem found, but the hospital was not assured, and the bus captain was asked to do another physical examination again. Again, once again, no problem was identified. I think the system, the physical examination system, is established and is working. There was a captain, Ma Wing-Sue, who failed a physical examination, and he was dismissed due to health grounds. And then this bus captain then worked as a light bus driver, and no problem has happened to him. Well, don't you think that the physical examination that we have is already stringent enough? Is it really fair to that driver who was dismissed like this? Is it because of some hidden or disease or conditions or some urban medical conditions? And even the hospitals have failed to discover the conditions. Are we going to be going for stringent tests like those for astronauts? Was it because of work stress or other personal factors? We need to explore this. Don't just say that we need to do more and more tests in the physical examination. As I've told you, even the hospitals may not be able to find out the problems. Next, we have Mr. Lam Kuei from New World First Bus Company Staff Union. Thank you, Chairman. I think the public are exerting a lot of pressure on this bus captain. After the accident, he is feeling very guilty. We have sent an executive committee member to visit him. Well, he said he felt a lot of guilt. Well, as we know, he didn't want the accident to happen. It seems that we are targeting bus captains and physical examinations. But you have professional drivers working, driving other heavy vehicles. The Transport Department policy is wrong. There are a lot of congestion. Drivers face a lot of pressure on the road.
They also have to comply with a very tight driving schedule. It is said that the guidelines are sufficient, the guidelines on working hours and also rest time, and also there is some flexibility afforded to bus companies, which can improve the situation as needed. However, the Transport Department pays no attention to road surfaces. Drivers may be complained against by passengers. Sometimes the complaints are unreasonable, and also we face a lot of pressure while we are on the road. We have to comply with the schedule. And bus captains are made to suffer from a lot of stress. And legislative councillors, the so-called councillors, why I say this? Because you don't understand how hard we work. You may make many proposals, but those may be disadvantageous to frontline captains. We do not object to the health check, that it be tightened up. And if all bus captains will be subject to health checks that can be disadvantageous to us, we would not object to it. Thank you. Next, Motor Transport Workers General Union Deputy Secretary, Mr. Lam Tin-Fu.
Good morning. First, the Motor Transport Workers General Union is of the view that professional drivers do place emphasis on road safety because once an accident happens, the professional drivers would be the first one to be hit. On the other hand, making it safe for passengers and other road users is also the responsibility of drivers. Therefore, no drivers want to see any accidents happen. The General Union thinks that these should be two points the public note. However, after this accident, there are many people in the community who are incessantly asking for more stringent health checks for bus captains. And it seems this would be the final solution to road safety. However, the General Union is of the view that this will not be the be-all and end-all of the situation. As other representatives have said, sometimes people who lead an urban life may not know that they are sick. And yet, you ask us to be subject to more serious health checks. What is worrying is that bus captains work in a very stressful environment, and bus companies adopt high-pressure management tactics. And so bus captains high-pressure management tactics. And so bus captains are becoming unhealthy by the day. Moreover, in regulating road safety, the administration missed out penalties and takes out numerous prosecutions. This would mean more work stress for bus captains. Given time, road safety can be hampered. Bus captains are most unsettled by this. Once an accident happens, when bus captains are not covered by labor laws, they face prosecution and bus captains think that this is very unfair. However, we have not seen the administration take effective measures to ask the bus companies to be more human in their management style and also to review the gray areas in our laws. And also when railways are developing fast, how can you find jobs for bus captains? If you don't do this, I think road safety is just a slogan. You are not helping bus captains with their work. That's all. Thank you. Next one, City Bus Limited Employees Union, the chairman, Mr. Tang Sin Heng. Thank you.
With regard to this accident, the emphasis seems to be on the electrocardiogram, whether people before the age of sixty should also be subject to it. We think the company should consult doctors first to see whether this is feasible. However, we won't object. I have heard from the Commissioner for Transport that our longest working hours is fourteen hours and those driving or driving duties would at most be eleven hours. But we like our hours to be evened out. Sometimes we work long hours or short hours and there is also a system for us to change shifts. For individual bus captains, health means most. Bus captains must be given time to rest. One more thing, I have heard from the Commissioner that bus companies will submit a report to the transport department for review every three months. But only the transport department and bus companies know about the reports, including the figures. This is hidden from the workers. And when we want a meeting with the TD, TD does not give us any feedback. We don't want the TD to call us up for a meeting only when something happens. This is serious because sometimes we have problems. We like to get assistance from the TD, but the TD doesn't reply. Yes, we have rest times, but as you know, we have many cars in the roads of Hong Kong and the roads are narrow and the schedules are always tight and we could only complain, but then there has never been any reply. That's all. Thank you. Next, KMB Staff Union, Office Bara, Mr. Chen Yi Chin.
Good morning. I'm an office barer of the KMB Staff Union. I'm attending the meeting on behalf of the KMB Staff Union. The union supports the views expressed on our health check, that is to have continuous health check and also to make it more stringent. But the responsibility should not all be trailed back to the bus captain. As you know, many other unions have pointed out the relevant issues, the work, the stress, working time, working environment, all these subject bus captains to stress. And bus captains may be suffering from illnesses, but they do not know it. And even health checks may not help to discover such illnesses. Even if you have a health check today, you are driving a bus tomorrow and it can be only tomorrow that you break down when you execute your duties. That reflects on the stress suffered by bus captains. I hope you will understand the stress suffered by bus captains. And I hope the companies can talk to the unions about our work. Thank you. Next, Long Wind Bus Staff Union, Office Bara, Mr. Lau Ki Wai.
Good morning, I'm Lau Ki Wai. About this accident, I also feel very sad about it. But sometimes I hope you will understand that bus captains themselves are under a lot of work stress. The stress comes from the companies and the protection that the company gives us. Does the community understand the hard work we undertake? I hope there will be more understanding. No one wants to see any accidents. Talking about stress, bus companies do suffer from a lot of stress as the commissioner said, ten hours every two working days. Do you also count our traveling time back home and also our sleep time? We do not live downstairs. And also our meal breaks. We are under a lot of stress as well. Sometimes it's too early, sometimes it's too late. Within six hours, whether you have any rest time, have you tried to find that out? Have you tried to seek an understanding into it? So work stress of bus captains can have an effect on their mentality and also their work. Just look at our company. I can give you an example. The platform, the lower platform for the disabled, it is part of our work and it adds to our work stress. This is what I like to say. And I think the others have been covered by other union representatives. Thank you. Thank you very much. The last one, Motor Transport Workers General Union, City Bus Branch, the director, Mr. Wong Kar Lok.
Good morning, Chairman and members. I am the director of Motor Transport Workers General Union City Bus Branch, Wong Kar Lok. Today, I like to say that since the serious accident on Chawan Road, society has made requirements of bus captains, for example, to be subject to more stringent health check and also to have more items in our health check at an earlier age, et cetera, et cetera. I like to talk about the views of the City Bus Branch. Number one, with regard to the health check items, that has been with us for over ten years. Many drivers who have been subject to the health checks have retired. We think it is well-established. Number two, after this accident, attention has been focused on bus captains. I think that is unfair. In fact, other road users have been involved in serious accidents like heavy trucks. Should they be subject to the same kind of health checks, including all those items that we undergo? Also, just like the Long Wind staff and also the incident of E thirty-one, the bus captain was subject to repeated health checks, but no particular problems were discovered. Later on, like this driver of New World First Bus, if he is to have a health check, but then no problems can be discovered, then how do you try to explain the car accident? I'd just like to say this to the meeting. Thank you very much. Thank you. Administration, would you like to respond?
Secretary, I have not much to say. I have heard the unions. They have said that the accident can be due to many different factors. Maybe it is not about the health condition of the bus captain. It may be the road condition or the numerous responsibilities on the shoulders of bus captains. I think those are well said. I think we should have a comprehensive view of any car accident. Bus company reps, would you like to say anything at this juncture? Nothing? Or Mr. Chong? Is it Mr. Chong?
Chairman, I am the managing director of New World First Bus, Mr. Samuel Chang. Our company feels very sad about this traffic accident. And on this occasion, would like to send our regards to the families of the deceased and also the victims who are injured. With regard to health checks, the company has an open mind. We are now consulting doctors and experts on the age for health checks and also the items within the health check. We'll listen to the views of doctors before we do follow up. KMB, any response at this juncture? Mr. Fok, Mr. Fok, please. Thank you, Chairman.
On the part of KMB, we also have an open mind about physical health checks. We're going to listen to views from various parties before we take the next move. Thank you. Eight members have indicated their wish to ask questions. Dr. Kwakake, Mr. Wong Goh Heng, Mr. Lee Jok Yan, Mr. Pun Siu Ping, Mr. Ronny Tong, Mr. Wu Chi Wah, and Mr. Dan Ka Biu. Five minutes for each member. Please be concise and precise. If a question has been asked, please don't repeat it. Dr. Kwakake. First of all, I'd like to thank all the representatives from bus unions for their attendance. Now, the investigation has not been completed, so I think no one should blame the bus captain in question. I agree that this should not be done. This is not an isolated incident. We should be looking at the protection offered by the transport department and the bus companies as far as passenger safety is concerned. The transport department allowed the bus company to be on duty for the fourteen hours a day and driving a bus for eleven hours. This is a total disregard of life. I don't know any doctor or anyone can accept that a bus captain be exploited to this extent by the bus companies. They are asked to drive for eleven hours a day while senior government officials don't have to ride on a bus. You have your own cars and chauffeurs. But there are members of the public who have to take the bus every day. There's no choice. And you have to pass steep slopes on your way. And they don't want bus captains to be exploited to such an extent. And there are only ten hours between two workdays. They don't live just next to the workplace. According to some bus captains, they need more than an hour of traveling to go back home. And then they need to take some food and they can only sleep for some five hours. And then on the other day, on the next day, they will have to drive for another eleven hours. So the rules are not followed faithfully. So this is outrageous. This is a total disregard of human lives. And this is not just the case with buses. The administration has also ignored the working hours of heavy vehicle drivers, light bus drivers, and you allow drivers to be exploited. They face a lot of stress. They have no choice. In Hong Kong, given our road conditions, I think the transport department should shoulder all the responsibility. We know that we should not allow buses which are virtually empty to be running on the road. The transport department hasn't done its job in taking away or relieving them of some of the pressure. Some, the route rationalization plans have failed to be realized. Turning back to health checks, the administration should not just let the bus companies decide what to do. Well, medical science has improved more than, more than, from what it was more than ten years ago. And now the age of onset of various diseases such as heart diseases and hypertension is much earlier than what it used to be and then going to have ECG after reaching the age of sixty. This is not helpful because a static ECG is not able to tell you the hidden heart conditions. You must do a stress ECG or some other more stringent test to discover hidden health conditions with the heart. We have to, we have to do more because if something untoward happens while the driver is driving a bus, the driver is the first victim. Well, I think both in the medical sector and those experts on physical fitness and cardiologists can also offer you the good advice. And then the bus captains are also subject to the sudden change of the shift work and that may also be a contributing factor. The government should pay attention to all these conditions, secretary. A number of speakers, both from the administration and from the unions, have spoken on the working hours. Of course, we want to do a better health check. The bus companies have to comply with the guidelines on working hours. As regards whether we should improve it, we can talk to the bus companies and the unions. The transport department is responsible for ensuring safety on the road. The member mentioned empty buses on the road. We want to rationalize bus routes. But as you know, when we consult the districts, they may be reluctant to cancel any bus route. So we have to listen to all the stakeholders when we discuss these matters with them. Mr. Wong Goh Heng. After this road accident on Chawan Road, together with Kwakake and executive members and directors of bus unions, we went to the hospital to send our regards, to convey our condolences, and we also went to the scene for a visit. Chairman, in this accident, we, we know that the number of casualties is high. My question is for the Labor Department. Occupational safety and health legislation doesn't cover professional drivers. In the last term of legislature, when we discussed the non-air-conditioned buses, we strongly requested the administration to review the current non-coverage of drivers in the occupational and safety legislation. So whether you are talking about a bus driver or taxi driver or light bus driver, they are not protected under the occupational safety and health legislation. So I want to ask a question of the commissioner, but the commissioner is not here and the secretary for labor and welfare is not here. So it's for the deputy commissioner to tell us whether you think occupational safety and health legislation should cover professional drivers. Mr. Lo.
Thank you for your question, Mr. Wong. At the last term of legislature, Mr. Wong raised the issue of occupational safety and health protection for professional drivers. We reported back to the manpower panel subsequently. In the paragraph, in June, subsequently in June, and we have mentioned our
in June, and we have mentioned our response in the paper we provide for this meeting. The occupational safety of a driver on the road cannot be divorced from the road conditions. So it's regulated by the road traffic legislation. I've heard from some other union representatives that in relation to the employees' compensation, are professional drivers not protected? Well, I have to confirm here that professional drivers are protected under employees' compensation legislation. Mr. Wong asked us to review the situation. In June, we reported to the Manpower Panel on the matter today. We're here, we've heard your views, including those from Mr. Wong Kok-hang, and we are going to go back and reconsider. If we have new ideas that we want to present, we will come back to brief the panel. Well, I would like to know the timetable. You are going to reconsider this, and when are you going to come back? The drivers are employees. I receive strong views from the unions, from the Motor Transport Workers General Union. So apart from employees drivers who are employees, there are also self-employed drivers. Many taxi drivers and light bus drivers are self-employed. So how can we extend the protection to self-employed drivers? Chairman. With regard to timetable, I've noticed that in the Transport and Housing Bureau's paper, while the police is conducting the investigation and carrying out necessary fore action, we'd like to see when the investigation is completed and whether there are issues identified in the reports. So it's too early to talk about a timetable. Turning to self-employed drivers, under the employment ordinance and all labor legislation, they apply to employees. And there are other self-employed people, not just drivers. Also, self-employed people are not protected or covered by the employment legislation. So Mr. Wong's suggestion is actually a much more deep-rooted issue. Mr. Lee Choy-yan. First of all, I'd like to thank the unions for coming to express their views. I've heard the administration and you. In paragraph seventeen, the administration only refers to the fore action in reviewing the arrangement for health checks for bus captains. So you just want to review the arrangements of health checks? I think, Secretary, you are being lazy. Because your health check does not pay attention to the risk factors leading to heart problems, stomach problems, wear and tear of drivers. I think when it comes to occupational safety and health, prevention is the most important. I think the secretary would agree that prevention is most important. You may want to conduct a health check, but you have to go further and find out why the bus captain is in such a physical condition. The biggest problem facing driver is this, they have to be on duty for fourteen hours, eleven of which driving. If you times, if you count six days in a week, it's eighty-four hours in a week. When we talk about standard working hours, we are talking about forty-four hours. Well, we are the only place in the world whereby bus drivers are required to drive eighty-four hours. You may argue that it's not eighty-four, it's sixty-six, but it's still outrageous. An international city like Hong Kong should not have such long working hours. And once there's a road congestion, you have longer traveling time, that's just easy to tell. So when you stop and pick up passengers, you have to go away right, go away at once. There's no break, no rest. It's not about the twenty-minute break, but about the different trips, the time between different trips, whether there's a break in between. There's no requirement. We are asking for a five-minute break. Our unions are asking for a five-minute break between two trips. You are asking for a twenty-minute break of every six hours, but the one-hour meal break is not always provided. For some, that's not, that's not, that's not offered. Did you know that? You talk about verification and checking. But none is done at the present moment.
And KMB is actually doing more to deprive bus captains of that one-hour meal break. So, Secretary, I don't want you to be lazy. Don't just look at health checks. Will you look at the entire work time, working hours, rest time system instead of just health checks? Because if people are already too stressed, too unhealthy, it doesn't make sense for you to just subject them to more health checks. Chairman, I will never be lazy. If you only think about health checks, that means you are lazy. Well, you were talking about the paper, and of course, the emphasis was placed on health checks. As unions were saying, after the accident, the media and other people's concern have been focused on health check, and that is why it has received our attention also in the paper. I understand what you mean. You have to be careful about people's health conditions. Some of them may be related to their occupation, some not. As you know, we lead an urban life, and I think to some extent, we have subject ourselves to the bad habits of urban life, and also, of course, we are also subject to work stress. As for working hours, now we have this guideline, but as I said, we have an open mind towards work hours and health checks. The guidelines, we provide the maximum possible according to our figures. On the average, bus captains work about ten hours per day, of which eight point three hours are spent on driving, so they do not reach the maximum. The bus companies' arrangements with regard to meal breaks, whether that can be subject to more improvement, I'm sure the TD will take that up with the bus companies. Road congestion, that's a bigger problem. This may have to do with the use of public transport by our citizens. There are indeed many cars on our road surfaces, and this is not a problem that we can solve overnight, but we do place emphasis on it. Mr. Pun Shiu-ping, thank you, Chairman.
Three people died and fifty-seven people were injured in this traffic accident. It has aroused the public's concern. I agree that without completing the investigation, we should not assign all the blame on the bus captain. It is unfair. I have a few questions for the administration. Bus captains fainting on duty, have you got statistics to show how many such incidents have occurred? Bus companies provide health checks to their bus captains. And the TD said that the guidelines are the basis of a report to DD, but the unions would like to see that report can that be done. And also about the health check. If you want health check to be very accurate, it's going to be costly. Has the administration considered subsidizing the health checks of professional drivers to lessen their financial burden? Can I please have some answers? Mr. Pun, we're asking for accident figures. I think we have them. Secretary. Chairman. Mr. Pun was asking about a certain situation, and that is bus captains fainting on duty. There have not been many such incidents in the past, but of course, we take every incident seriously. And health checks may not let us know the health conditions comprehensively, as union representatives have said. Because we cannot expand the items on the health check indefinitely. Sometimes you need to do very in-depth investigation in order to discover an illness, but we'll talk to the medical sector. And I will ask the commissioner to let you know how we handle reports submitted by the bus companies. But overall speaking, the number of professional drivers or commercial drivers can be different depending on what criteria you use. If you look at people holding a commercial driving license, including lorries, there are one point three million odd. It's a big number, but we don't have that many such kinds of vehicles on our roads. Therefore, the definition of a professional driver can be different. As to whether we should subsidize the health checks, we have heard this member, we will give it some comprehensive consideration. Mr. Pun, any follow-up? TD's handling of reports from bus companies. Commissioner, please. Chairman. The TD actually does meet with bus company unions. And they have told us their views and observations on work hours. If unions and bus captains have any views on work hours and shift patterns of franchise bus companies, we welcome their views. And we welcome more in-depth exchange. The TD also conducts its own independent monitoring and taken together with the reports submitted by bus companies, we do have an overall view of the work hours and rest time, but we welcome exchange with work unions. Mr. Liang Kwakong, Chairman.
When I was small, I read books. And they said that bosses were cruel. They would be careful with the machinery, like buses. If a bus breaks down, the bus company would send many people to maintain it and repair it so that the bus can be used for longer, but not the drivers. If a driver is sick, you can fire him, dismiss him, or he can resign, just like this particular bus captain. I don't know why he fell unwell suddenly. And this led to a tragedy. Of course, this is a serious matter, but what I'm trying to say is, you can repair and maintain your buses, which costs you millions of dollars, for one. But those people who drive these buses for you, you are not very caring towards them. This is the most cruel part. You care more for iron than a human body. The administration says that within fourteen hours, you should only drive for eleven hours. This is not right. You'd rather stipulate shorter hours and then for them to work overtime. This is where the problem is. You allow them such long hours, and they can always go for the maximum, even if bus companies are being kind, still, we're all here and we always blame the bus companies because even if the bus companies are bad elements, I'm not saying you are bad elements, or even if they are, one bus captain can only harm so many people, but if the bus company is bad, then you can turn a few thousand good people into bad people. You don't give them the proper health checks, you subject them to long hours, and you subject them to tight schedules, and they are made anxious. They don't want to exceed the scheduled time. And I also complained about not having the buses on the road. I was complaining about number two A. I said I waited half an hour and no bus came, and so I called up to complain. I said, you should just wind up your company. And then, of course, the bus company would have blamed the bus captain. I didn't know that then. When the administration issues a franchise to a company to provide public service, you are serving the public, and you must act in a responsible manner. You must not involve in any act that is unreasonable. So I'd like to ask you this. How did you set the hours? Did you do so according to international standards or what? Why have you stipulated such long hours? Why would you think that someone who is subject to so much stress, well, they do not drive day after night, night after day, like Mr. Wong Kok-hang, but at least they drive day after day? So you have to explain yourself. Why is that so in Hong Kong? One more thing, the GMBs. I tell you a story. On Maan Shan, I was visiting residents one night, and the GMB driver complained to me once I boarded the GMB. And he said that from Sha Tin to this residential estate, he said it would take twenty minutes. He was driving the last bus. And I told Mr. Lau Kang-wah, both of us complained, and still, they would not do any improvement. Mr. Lau Kang-wah lives there. And if he drives and the GMB bumps into him, he will die as well. So you have to give us a detailed report. You cannot blame the tax captains. Please give some time for the commissioner to respond. I don't think the secretary is lazy. He's just stubborn. He's just thinking that he knows best. And if that's the case, the less lazy he is, the more serious the problem. And the bus captains are here to tell you how much they suffer. Maybe you should drive a bus, maybe not. You might speed. You should talk to the labor side. They won't cheat you. They may not be brave, but they will not cheat you. The management side will always cheat you because they are holding a lot of assets, and they want to make a profit. That's all. I don't need an answer.
Mr. Christopher Chong, I'd like to ask you whether you would review the franchise bus system. Many union representatives are here. And I feel that these union representatives are under more stress than bus captains. They say they don't object to more stringent health check. Of course, because of this car accident, they won't say no, but then they are also afraid the bus captains cannot pass the test, and so they will be dismissed. Why is that so? This is because of the systems embraced by bus companies. Given today's society, we still have such company policies. Deputy Commissioner, my elder brother is a retired bus captain. They would not be able to work eight hours and be able to support a family that would give them only eight thousand, nine thousand dollars. That's huge exploitation. To support a family, you must work overtime, and you have your subsidies and bonuses taken away from you once there is a complaint. You must review the system, Secretary. If you don't review the system, there are all these uncivilized policies in our civilized society. People say there are too many buses on the road, that bus captains have too long working hours, and the health checks are too sloppy. Why is that so? Because they want to get the biggest profit margin. They want to make the biggest profit, and in a stretch of six hours, how many minutes of rest do they have?
And in a stretch of six hours, how many minutes of rest do they have? You disembark from the bus, you go to the station office and then you sign and you come back. That will take you a few minutes. That is all the rest time that you have. And also when you start your shift, you have to wait for a bus to take you to the place of work and you have to stand for half an hour. That all adds up. So the question is, bus companies, how are you treating your bus companies? You are not a factory. If you are a factory, you exploit the workers, the worker and his family will suffer, but you are a bus company. You exploit the bus captains and all passengers and other road users will be victimized. Now that there are so many deaths and injuries. Secretary, why don't you review the franchise bus company policy? Unions are saying that uh there will be more costs if there is more stringent health checks, so they will not have a pay rise. But then the bus companies also make a lot of income. What about those from advertisements? The advertisement boards at stations, they are so huge. You have a lot of income from them. City Bus has been combined with New World First Bus. You have used the depots for offices of your subsidiaries. Are you charging the right rentals? Does the TD know about this? All that is non-fair income. You can use the income to increase the salary so you can hire better drivers.
If you pay them more, they will uh be healthier. Now you're asking for uh the biggest possible profit. You're asking them to drive different routes or to have uh ships without a break. So secretary, are you going to review the policy on franchise bus companies? Otherwise, uh you are not going to achieve anything. You're, it's useless to have more body or health checks. We are going to see more tragedies. Uh chairman, uh in relation to working hours, we have an open mind. We're going to take a look at the guidelines again. The franchise agreements are there to regulate the service provided to the, to the riding public and as well as the setting of fares. We don't have to deal with everything under the franchise agreements. Because there are other things such as occupational safety, road safety. Uh we, we attach importance to all this in the, in the government. And if uh you like, you may also wish to get some response from the bus companies. Anything from the bus companies? Mister Zhang, I need to clarify a point. Mister Chong said there are other sources of revenues for the bus companies such as advertisement. And also for New World First Bus, we have leased our surplus premises to other parties. All these revenue sources are accounted for in our franchise agreement. KMB?
Uh with regard to advertisement revenue for KMB, it's about a hundred million dollars a year. And the revenue is accounted for in KMB's accounts, so it's a use to subsidize a fare.
Mister Ken Capu. What is the road show then? What is road show then? It has been criticized a lot. You may just be referring to the advertisement boards uh at your bus stops, but not road show. It said that the average duty hour is ten hours or driving hours eight point three. I, I don't know whether you are just averaging the figures because they are new drivers. I don't know whether there's been any underestimated. They are hourly rated, uh drive bus captains. If you mix the two sets of figures, of course, uh they, they are hourly rated, the total the average will be lower as a result. Why is it that there's no meal hour for some bus captains? Well, it tells you that the bus companies are mean. Well, there, there may be a, an, a a non-duty period of a few hours. But uh they may have to work two shifts and there are a few hours in between. But the meal break would give you a higher uh remuration. So they are just so mean. The government has a duty to protect professional drivers. I, I think they have, they score, the government scores three zero marks. Well, I have to care my interest as the secretary general of a, of the Motor Transport Workers General Union. The occupational safety and health legislation excludes professional drivers. Uh the ordinance is about, first of all, specified occupational diseases and how you may make claims. And secondly, the, the, the general duty of employers to provide safe and secure workplace for employees. And since professional drivers are excluded, the employer is not required to look into this under the O S H ordinance. So no legislation, second, no data. Last month, I wrote two letters, one to the Labor Department, the other to the SWD. I asked about the statistics on occupational safety and diseases suffered by drivers. And there was none, because according to Transport Department, it's the statistics are subdued under logistics and transport sector statistics. I wrote to the SWD concerning the traffic victim assistance scheme. And I asked about the number of claims arising from accidents. And I asked for figures on drivers. There was no statistic on drivers or the breakdown for professional drivers. So no one is facing the real problems, no one is looking into the occupational safety issues faced by drivers. And I'm also saddened by the death of the taxi driver. He was self-employed. He got no protection. Well, of course, uh some would say that uh an application could be made to the no-fault scheme. It depends on the circumstances. You may get some compensation, but it's different from the protection uh under the occupational safety system. Uh I hope the government can respond to the total lack of protection. I would like to defer the question to the Labor Department. Well, professional drivers' occupational safety matters are regulated by the road traffic uh ordinance. Uh but for other types of work, the Labor Department's occupational safety and health legislation would apply. As I've said, the occup- the employee's compensation ordinance applies to all employed drivers. So uh occupational diseases specified in the uh ordinance would attract compensation and claims can be made. Mister Ronnie Tong. I hope the secretary will understand when there is an accident like this, uh the community and this council would certainly uh raise concerns. I hope secretary would be more focused in in the effort to look for the improvements. More than ten people died from a car accident in two thousand and three in Timun, and there was an expert panel convened. And then there were recommendations with regard to the safety and, and driving hours of drivers. And I don't know whether you remember this, and that's why we had the guidelines. And then in two thousand and four, a motion was passed in this council, asking that the duty hour and driving hours of drivers to be reduced to ten hours and eight hours respectively, but the government did not react. The guidelines still stipulate that they are fourteen hours and eleven hours respectively. Would the secretary promise that as, as a part of your follow-up actions, following the former uh expert report and also to look into the causes of this accident, a panel as a task force be set up to look into issues surrounding working hours and driving hours of drivers. Even though this accident might not have to do with driving or, or working hours. To be fair to bus captains, such a panel is certainly warranted. And I hope the secretary can also promise us that the guidelines will be amended in nine years as passed since two thousand and three. And now we have a chance to do a better job, notwithstanding the poor job we did back then. The guidelines should be reviewed. The guidelines are not binding on the bus companies. And as a result, they are not doing what they can to comply. I hope the secretary would promise us that if that's found to be the case, you will go for legislating for uh working hours. Some members are rather emotional in their speeches, but I hope we can be more focused and then ask for more to be done. Secretary, we understand that members have shown a lot of concern after this accident. I can understand that. Well, you asked that we be more focused. Actually, we are actually doing that. Uh the community uh is more concerned about a few things such as health checks. At present, this is arranged by the bus companies. They, the bus companies decide what to check. The items covered are more or less among bus companies. Is there a scope for further the streamlining? Well, I, I believe so. And turning to working hours, there was a motion moved by this council in two thousand and four. Uh we have an open mind about this. We are going to talk to the stakeholders, including franchise bus companies and unions. We'll listen to their views. The current guidelines were issued in October twenty ten. But we are willing to listen to views again. We'll look at the operation and the work undertaken by bus companies in setting the working hours. We believe, uh having guidelines would give us more flexibility and we can make adjustments as required. Although they are guidelines, the franchise bus companies are very serious about compliance, and they have been submitting reports to the Transport Department regularly. Are you going to set up an expert panel to investigate, to look into health checks for bus captains and their working hours? I don't want to have just a casual response like that. I hope some action will be taken by the secretary. Chairman, we have dedicated colleagues working in the Transport Department on, on this matter. We'll wait until the completion of the investigation by the police. And we can certainly do all those suggested measures, even if there's no expert panel, but I certainly agree that we should be focused in our work. Mister Wu Jiwei. Many members have referred to the accident and to the occupational safety and health side. The administration hasn't failed to conduct any tracking survey with regard to the accidents and the working conditions of bus captains. Such a survey will inform us how to make adjustments to section nine of road traffic, or regulation nine of road traffic driving license regulations. There should be such tracking surveys to see whether special health checks should be conducted in relation to certain types of disease that bus captains are more prone for. And also, when you conduct a health check on bus captain, you should not just pay attention to the, the personal conditions, physical conditions. You should also look at the stress faced by bus captains. Uh people, members have received complaints about lost trips. And complaints like this will will bring pressure on the bus companies and the bus companies will try to arrange a tighter schedules to, to improve the frequency. Well, they have been talking about rationalization of bus routes. As a district councillors for more than ten years, I know that they face a lot of difficulties in, in, in implementing such brands. But are they, are these difficulties insurmountable so as to relieve the bus captains of some pressure? I believe the government is capable of doing it. You should not try to shift the brain to district councils. Don't put up such an excuse and and fail to rationalize bus routes. That, in my view, would be one of the important things to do to reduce the pressure faced by bus captains. So I hope the government can tell us that it's determined to get things done in this regard.
Just now Mister Wu said that we could do some tracking study. I think that is a good suggestion. Let us try to grasp the trend of things. We will try to follow up on that. As for the use of road space, it is a problem we all face. It doesn't only affect bus captains, but also other motorists and even pedestrians. Rationalization of bus routes. The administration thinks that this is an urgent matter we should tackle. We understand many different stakeholders are involved and the districts have their own views. I'm not saying that the districts are unreasonable. It's just that we have to take care of many different sides. But I agree, we need to show some determination. Because this does not only affect road conditions, making them very congested. It also has an impact on roadside air pollution and it affects the development of Hong Kong as a city as a whole. So we must work to our level best on rationalization of bus routes. And we'd like to take this up again at this panel with members. Like to ask the bureau. I think both within and outside this council, we have discussed the rationalization of bus routes for a long time, but progress has been slow. Do you have a timetable and a roadmap for doing this? And how are you going to turn the experience you have gained into action? Can you give us a timetable and roadmap? Chairman. Whenever we had new railways commissioning, we would try to rationalize bus routes in the district council. And on an annual basis, the TD reviews bus routes and tick up the issue with the districts, but now we look at it on a territory-wide basis. And we'd like to draw up an overall strategy. Um and then we can come back to have an exchange with you. Do you have a timetable? We think it's urgent. Within this session of Lechko, within this year, we will certainly come back with proposals. I hope the bus companies, when you go to the districts. Um I hope district councillors will also give a helping hand because there is strong opposition on the part of residents, and I think councillors can give a hand here. Mister Chen Han Pan. Chairman, whenever there is a car accident, if buses are involved, the community would always mention the rest time of bus captains and their health. According to the paper in para eleven of two oh five one, I think I have been alarmed by that paragraph. It says people can work fourteen hours and rest for ten hours. Now, many people have mentioned the same point, but I'd like to ask a question on para eleven. In October twenty ten, the TD revised the guidelines to further improve the work hours and rest time and bus companies have to submit reports every three months. It is said that the compliance situation has been satisfactory. Now, I have two questions. Number one. The TD, apart from receiving reports every three months from bus companies, do you also monitor the compliance situation proactively? And the timetable for work hours and rest time, is that strictly adhered to? If you do, how do you do it? Do you conduct spot checks without giving notice or surprise checks? And secondly, if it is found that bus companies do not follow your guideline, has there been any penalty metered out? The second question. Does any information show that even if you implement the guideline, the bus companies have been too lax in implementing the guidelines? Say, for example, has it been that bus companies, uh bus captains would like to make a bigger income and have given up their rest time voluntarily in order to make more trips? If yes, would the administration analyze the information and also forward the information for our reference? Secretary, can I defer to the commissioner, please? Uh the compliance situation of the guidelines. Commissioner.
Chairman, bus companies submit reports every three months to the TD. But we also engage independent entities to investigate into the work hours of bus captains of franchised bus companies. And the investigation is done without notice. In twenty ten, as the secretary said, we revised the guidelines and in twenty eleven, the investigation report showed that the compliance situation was good. I also said that from our exchange with unions, we did have the observations of unions and the views. We will always follow up those views with the bus companies. Mister Chen, any penalty system?
The unions might submit some information to you. How did you follow up with the information? Did you do investigation? Did you like follow up on a few cases? Which had to do with work hours and did you find that the complaints from the unions were established? Or substantiated? Commissioner, as I said, the compliance situation was in general good. We did follow up with certain cases with the bus companies. The bus companies explained to us um and if there was deviation from the guidelines. If we find that the deviation is not serious, we'll um tell the bus companies to be stricter in the compliance. Now, of course, the guidelines are not laws. However, the guidelines have been issued by the TD to franchise bus companies. If they do not comply with the guidelines, that could be regarded as not complying with the franchise condition vis a vis the supply and maintenance of regular and reliable bus service. Did you take out any prosecution? Was there any successful prosecution in the past? Commissioner. This is not backed by a legal basis, so there is no question of prosecution. But after revising the guidelines in twenty ten, over the past year, we have had reports showing that the compliance situation has been good. So, we have not discovered any serious incident which required um any particular follow-up, but we did ask bus companies for more information and why they did not comply with the guidelines. A few other members would like to have a second round. Wong Kwok-heng, Lee Chuen Yen, Ten Kapiu. Liang Kwok-hung. Three minutes each, alright, because of time constraint. We also have to deal with a substantive motion to be moved by the deputy chairman. Mister Lee Chuen Yen.
Thank you, Chair. I was focusing on the factors for stress in particular, rest time. The commissioner said it was overall or in general satisfactory that she would uh direct the bus companies to follow the guidelines. I don't know what kind of penalty you have had. You did not mention any penalties. You just said follow up. What do you mean by follow up? What follow up did you do? You said it was in general satisfactory. It means it is not totally satisfactory. What did you do then? If you are so sloppy and lax in your monitoring of the rest time, that has contributed to the stress suffered by drivers. As I said, they had to comply with very tight schedules. You did not answer my question. If the bus has been on the road for over an hour and it has to embark on another journey right away after visiting its destination and the bus captain does not have any rest time, we said that there should be at least five minutes. Now, how can you ensure that there will be these five minutes for drivers between trips? You should give us an answer. What did you do to ensure that? And also in the future, what are you going to do to ensure that there will be this five-minute break between trips? Commissioner.
Chairman, in the guidelines. You can see that the guidelines are not as detailed as providing for a five-minute break between any two trips. But we do say that there should be at least twenty minutes within any six-hour duty and there should be a meal break of at least twelve minutes. Or rest time of twelve minutes in the first four hours. All these are included in the bus companies' reports and this is also covered in our independent study. You said it is overall satisfactory. What did you find unsatisfactory and what follow-up did you do, Commissioner?
As I said, we did ask the bus companies to give explanation. If we should see any situation that is unsatisfactory, we would direct the bus companies to improve the situation. After revising the guidelines in twenty ten, we could see that the compliance situation is satisfactory. There have not been any particularly serious incident requiring um severe handling. Now, we'd like to know how the guidelines have been implemented and also if bus companies flout the guidelines. What can you do at the bureau or the department to make sure that compliance takes place? This is our biggest concern. Wong Kwok-heng.
Thank you, Chair. Just now, Ten Kapiu made a very good point. Three zeros. Mister Leng, deputy commissioner, you responded to me by saying that you would go back and take a look and review the situation. That you have to wait for the judicial process of this car accident to be completed. I think that is nonsense. I was talking about the O S H O that it should cover professional drivers. I'm not talking about this traffic accident. This year, there were three accidents involving bus captains and also three last year. And I'm talking about all professional drivers and their occupational um protection. Ten Kapiu has said you don't have laws, you don't have the statistics, you do not have any protection for them, so three zeros. I'd like to ask you, when will you submit the review to the manpower panel? I'm sure you won't submit it to the transport panel. So when will you submit it to the manpower panel? You cannot say you want to wait for the judicial process to be completed. I think that is an excuse. Because I'm not talking about the Chaiwan Road accident, but overall occupational safety and protection for professional drivers. Mister Leng, you just speak. We will switch on the mic for you.
Just now, I said that um actually, in response to an earlier request by Mister Wong Kwok-heng, actually in June during the last term of Lechko, we already submitted the review results to the manpower panel. That was in June. And I was saying that in view of the serious traffic accident this time around, would like to take another look since the police's investigation into uh police is investigating into the traffic accident. I did not mention judicial process. I said we would wait for the investigation so as to see what lessons can be learned so that we can take another look. Thank you.
I'd like to follow up. You said you would take another look. Would you submit the results of your efforts to the manpower panel or the transport panel?
Chairman, I said that after taking another look, we would go back to the manpower panel to give a report.
Mister Ten Kapiu. Uh one, sorry, chairman, my three minutes are not up. You have ten odd seconds. That is why I think the administration must take a square look at the lack of protection for professional drivers under O S H O. Three zeros. I don't want to repeat those three zeros. I'm of the view that the reports submitted to the last term of Lechko just did not face up to the issue.
Mister Ten Kapiu, uh to follow up on the points made by Mister Wong Kwok-heng, I would like to urge the transport department and labor department to do all the reviews required to make sure that there are statistics and to look into protection for drivers, especially self-employed drivers. We want to see concrete proposals in the current year in twenty twelve thirteen. And the same should be submitted to the manpower panel. I believe Mister Wong Kwok-heng mentioned this in a council meeting or there was an oral question at the end of twenty eleven on this. And the then secretary, Mister Matthew Jones, said an account would be given before the end of the last term of government. But it the promise was not kept. I hope you would make good that promise now. And there are other issues which have not been mentioned, but there are also matters of concern to me. And that is the mental and physical conditions of bus captains. Uh they may have to do with their own behavior or habits. Uh but this time, we have not mentioned air quality inside the bus. There are complaints that some buses switch off their the air ventilation. Because if you have fresh air coming in, the power consumption would go up. Well, it's an anonymous complaint, so I can already verify that. But even if you have an air ventilation of fresh air, you are just going to take in air from the busy road. I hope the transport department, the labor department and other health-related departments, please look into this. Whether the bus captain is physically fit is one matter, whether the air quality is a is a beneficial or is a is satisfactory is another matter that we need to look into. Regarding occupational safety and health for uh drivers, I think the transport department, the labor department representative would certainly take the questions back and consider them. As for the air quality, air quality for professional drivers, I think the bus companies may may wish to respond. Bus company representatives? For the air conditioning system on the bus is automatic. We we opened the the doors quite frequently. So air will come in and we also have an air filter. All incoming air will be filtered and that would ensure air quality remains good. Some members refer to the response by the secretary for labor uh wealth, labor welfare on the the review to examine the coverage. But that's precisely uh why we reported back to the manpower panel on the findings of the survey in June and now we are trying to take a fresh look due to the recent accident. Mister Yik Chi Ming. Well, many members have spoken of long working hours and lack of sufficient rest period. Mister Wu Jiwei and some other members also mentioned rationalization of routes which have been talked about for a long time, but then not really implemented. I hope all the those who are district councillors can help us. Because if you can rationalize routes, you can reduce road congestion. And this is beneficial for the purpose of keeping to the schedule. As for the longest working hours of fourteen hours and the longest driving hours of eleven hours, they are too long. I hope the government can review this. Okay, that's just call a comment. Mister Liang Kwok-hung. Well, if it's not law, you can only urge them to do this and that. You can only take follow-up action on this and that. If there's no law on this, how can you enforce this? Can you really ask them not to do it anymore? Can you tell them that the next time round, you are not going to be given the franchise? You have only one operator to choose from. So you must increase the the effectiveness. Because when there's an accident, the pressure will be passed on to everyone. You must make sure that something and what happens, they are going to suffer uh serious consequence in the franchise agreement. How can we monitor you? If first of all, if your information is not made public, all information should be made public. And then you should set up a fund and enable monitoring by the community. We don't have money to do that. You can set aside some money, say thirty million dollars, to monitor the situation and that should be outside monitoring. You must change the working and driving hours immediately. Fourteen and eleven hours must be changed. Without rules, there's no compliance. If you do not enforce the rules strictly, then there are no rules to speak of. If I break the rules, Mister Chan Kam La would evict me right away. Do you have the power to do this for to K M B? Well, there must be fines if they make certain mistakes. The money should go to the unions. And it would be best if just the loss suffered by the bus company means the gain of the unions. If they are not doing a good job, they will lose money. But now we have no law, no penalty. And I hope you can compare with other countries. Uh regarding our bus captain's work situation, do we compare ourselves to Africa or other countries? And then we can do some measurement. We can compare ourselves with others. Well, there those are comments. I believe Well, there, those are comments. I believe uh, uh, they are noted. Uh, we are going to take follow-up action regarding the guidelines and uh, uh, when we conduct a review, certainly we would uh, make comparisons with other countries. Uh, there are two more members in the second round. I don't pre- I'm, I'm not going to allow a third round. Mister Chung Shu Gan? Secretary, you uh, has not promised to review the franchise agreement. I know you dare not touch the big consortium and their interests, but you have to look at the pay and the employment conditions. The basic salary is just eight thousand dollars. And they can get six to, another six to eight thousand dollars in bonus and allowance. Then, of course, they are going to work long hours, but uh, it's not reasonable. If you earn just eight thousand dollars, you might as well work as a security guard. But that's what happened to my elder brother. Uh, he earned seven thousand odd by working as a security guard and some resident will give you uh, food. So eight, if you pay eight thousand dollars, you are not going to have a good bus captains. And don't change the subject and blame the district council by turning to the uh, rationalization of bus routes. There are many cross harbor routes, but they do not want to cha- charge the same fees as uh, local routes. Look at the long queues in Wan Chai. If I, if uh, Route one oh one and uh, Route number ten charge the same fare, I would certainly take either instead of insisting on taking number ten. Don't blame the district council. Don't blame other people. I think the problem lies with the system. Mister Wu Chi Wei? Uh, colleagues have commented at length on the uh, working hours. The Labor Department is going to review, but the review is not going to be about the uh, let, coverage of legislation for um, professional drivers. I think this is unfair to those who, who are professional drivers. If occupational safety and health legislation can cover drive professional drivers, I think it's all going to be helpful to the uh, effort to rationalize routes. Because if professional drivers are covered, the bus company will be under a lot of pressure to face up to the problems. Uh, now we only have guidelines on working hours and it's, they are fourteen hours and eleven hours respectively. Uh, I understand, uh, I now understand why the bus companies are finding it so hard to recruit uh, bus captains because the working hours are so long then uh, they cannot compete in the market. I think a study must be launched expeditiously to look into ex- the extension of occupational safety and health uh, protection to professional drivers. I hope the Labor Department will do this uh, quickly and uh, cover professional drivers. Alright, the points have been made by uh, some members uh, that uh, I, I would like the department to do something expeditiously. Mister Gary Fan, our Deputy Chairman uh, has tabled a document for members' information. Uh, there is actually a suggestion. And that is a regular health check should be the given to professional heavy vehicle drivers. It's a long the suggestion. I don't think I should read out. If it were a motion, I would have to do that. Mister Gary Fan would uh, like to ask members to support your, your suggestion, right? Uh, yes, uh, this is to facilitate members' discussion. Uh, members' concerns and uh, issues are similar to these suggestions. I hope the administration would be more serious about uh, issues relating to long working hours of professional drivers. And the administration should adopt a long-term view and uh, conduct studies in, into possible legislation. And existing laws should be amended so that we can make sure that bus companies would face up to the unsatisfactory, the working, the environment of the bus captains. With a view to seeing some reforms and improvements to the working conditions of uh, these bus captains, thereby improving uh, road safety. I sup- support the suggestion. I think the, this is not just about bus captains, but about professional drivers generally. I don't know whether the administration is going to change what's stated in uh, seventeen, paragraph seventeen. And that is uh, the Transport Department is going to look into the health checks and the work hours and uh, rest breaks. I don't want them to return and say that we are, we were only talking about health checks. And the Secretary has promised to have meetings with bus companies. When would the, the meetings take place? What's the extent of the promise reviewed? And secondly, is uh, what about uh, drivers, professional drivers generally?
Secretary, Chairman, I said that we would review the guidelines on working hours. We have heard members, we would seek an understanding into the bus companies' views. The Commission, a Commission of the Transport has already made arrangements to have discussion with the major unions the issues arising from this serious traffic accident. Now, of course, we will not just listen to the management, but we will also listen to the workers. Mister Leung Kwok Hong? Of course, you would listen to the employees. Please wait, Mister Leung Kwok Hong, because I'm actually handling Mister Gary Fan's proposal. I don't want to restart the discussion because time is almost up. Mister Gary Fan has put forward a proposal. It includes his own views. I don't think you would object to the showing of concern towards uh, the health check of professional drivers. But today, health check is only part of the topic under discussion. You are also concerned about the operation of bus companies, the systems, uh, rest time and shift patterns as well as bus routes, et cetera. Those are all important. Therefore, I don't think I should put this paper to a vote. Or else, uh, the community and even bus companies might think that we assign all the blame of this car accident to the bus captain, that the health check has not been properly done. In fact, in terms of the operation of bus companies, in particular, the rest time for bus captains and also their wages, I think a lot has to be reviewed. So I don't plan to put this paper from Mister Gary Fan to the vote. You agree? If you agree, that's it. The Bureau, the Department and also the bus companies have heard members today. I hope we can continue to follow up on the issue. I'd like to thank the Secretary for Transport and Housing, the two bus companies and also the ten representatives of unions for their attendance at the meeting. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.